Department of Independence School District to order. Let the record show that a core of our board members is present. That this meeting has been duly called. And the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion made by Robert.
Second.
Seconded by Linda. All four. Seven oh, we're all present. I'll say a prayer. Prayer will be completed. Lord, thank you for getting us through this hot first day of school. And we pray, Lord, for the kids that might have got on the wrong bus or something right now. We're placing them around where they need to go. Just be with our bus drivers and our maintenance people. Be with those custodians that are cleaning up right now, folks, just making all this stuff happen. Thank you, Lord, for the air conditioning that we have. And we pray, Lord, that we get through these next few hot weeks. Be with our students and give us as a board wisdom. Amen. Pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas law, pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Any special recommendations?
Uh, note that we'll start the recognition again at our September board meeting, where we'll recognize teachers and staff members of the month at that time.
Okay. Max, we have any?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, item board. Consider approval of the consent agenda. Any questions on that? As so let's take a motion in a second to approve this presented. And if we get a second, we will take questions. Have a motion consent made by Robert. I second. Any questions on the consent agenda? What was in the consent?
So one, one thing that normally is not there, you see, that student insurance, been in consent agenda before, that's why we put it back there again. Uh, what you did see is increase on that from what it was last year of about $20,000. Part of that was because of the claims made last year. We had some pretty good claims from, from some student athletes who got hurt that, uh, that used that, that insurance. So, um, same carrier, it was still the lowest bid that we received. And, uh, went from eighteen to forty or twenty to forty.
Eight, a little over eighteen to almost forty one.
It was pretty good last year, so.
Now, that didn't actually stay the same last year. This is the first increase we've had.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a property there we're about to work on as well. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other additions or questions on that consent agenda? All right. Got a motion in a second, so all four. That's seven oh.
Thank you.
Move to our action items here. Item A, consider approval. They propose twenty twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four tax rate. Mr. Prager? Good to have you.
Thank you very much.
All right, after, uh, calculating and getting a lot of information from T E A, we have compressed our tax rate. First compression went to seventy-one point five five cents. Then they did their extra compression on top of that. And we are now going to have an M and O tax rate of sixty-six point nine two cents. Uh, our debt rate is going to be thirty-seven point oh four cents. Um, that is including our current debt with our added, uh, twenty-one cents on our bond. That's going to give us an, uh, overall rate of one dollar and three point nine six cents. For our tax rate that is, uh, coming up. Do you have any questions on that?
So we're not approving the tax rate now. We're, we're basically approving the proposed that will be posted in the paper. And then we'll have the, the hearing on the twenty-eighth and approve it at that time as well.
So it is only going up about two and a half cents. And you may have some people come up to you and say, well, I see that y'all are proving something that's higher than what it is. But why is it only two and a half cents higher and everything? Well, that's because T E A did their compression based on legislative session. I did a little quick calculation in case some people want to know because right now, the law is that we are still using the $40,000 homestead exemption. The hundred thousand does not take place until November seventh, when all of us vote on it. And we're, we're all smart people and know that it's going to pass very handily. But with that increased tax rate, say you have a two hun- $200,000 home. Right now, at current rate, our current tax rate and, um, current law, that's about sixteen hundred and twenty-four dollars a year. When the hundred thousand kicks in and with our new tax rate of two and a half, sixteen twenty-four becomes a thousand thirty-nine.
Wow.
So.
Wow.
Five hundred, a half million dollar home, almost forty-seven hundred, and it's forty-one fifty-eight. So we're going to add the debt to this from our bond, and people are going to pay less taxes. So I'm not how you get better than that.
That's right.
It's, it's good for everybody.
Will that be more official on the twenty-eighth?
Yeah. Yes, that, that one will be an official. That way we will, I don't, there's not going to be any changes to it. So it will, it will stay with that.
Okay. So that'd be countless statements we did.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is what you say with the bond and all, is what was the increase?
Two cents.
Two, two, two and a half cents.
What was it going to be?
Twenty-one.
What we voted on, twenty-two cents.
Twenty-one cent. Oh, that is, that's, that's pretty good. But a lot of people are probably going to question and go, how is that possible? And as well, that hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption is, is, is massive. So that's going to help out a lot. People be a lot more, those that voted no should be, hey, it's not so bad.
Now, let's say the compression really pushed M and O down to where the, where the lower tax rate comes. So.
Do more questions from Mr. Prager. Okay. So I need a motion that we approve the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tax rate.
Motion made.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Robert. It's pretty good motion. All four. Uh, consider approval of the public hearing, meeting date on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget and proposed tax rate. So that meeting date.
May the twenty-eighth?
August twenty-eighth.
Yes, sir.
So that's what this motion would be. It would be to approve August twenty-eighth as our public hearing meeting date, uh, for this twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget and proposed tax rate.
Craig is, Craig is prepared for you in, in that, uh, those, uh, look at what those proposals are as well.
Okay. You bet.
All right, on the debt service, I think that might be the first one that's on there.
Yes.
Um, you, you can see we had a two point three million dollar budget for that. This year is going to be a little over six point six million. That is because we are adding the, uh, bond onto that. That'll be our bond payments that we make on current debt and the, uh, the new bond debt. We, it, it looks to be that we are going to take in a little bit more money than, um, what our actual bond debt is. And that's basically due to the state is actually going to give us hold harmless, um, revenue due to the extra compression and everything like that with the, that they passed. So our, yes, in, our fund balance is going to increase a little bit. It's the sixty-nine thousand that's going to come from the, uh, state funding that we get. But there's no, not much difference in that. The next one is our food service one. With the food service, you can see that we have, um, revenues on this line item. Um, revenues, if you look, I've added a new line than what was previous year, use of fund balance. Um, we're going to use eighty-seven thousand on our fund balance. And that's going to basically give us a balanced budget versus our expenditures. When you look down there, using our fund balance, at the very bottom, you'll see that the three months expenditures of two oh two, two hundred two thousand. That is what the, uh, Texas Department of Agriculture tells us. That's our maximum fund balance we can have. We should never, never have more than three months, um, operating expenses. So when you go over that, they want you to spend it. So Heather, this year, bought some equipment and, as you can see, has knocked it down about three hundred and eight thousand. We're still over the limit, so she's got some other things coming in. And that's going to use about eighty-seven thousand of that. And that's going to give us a fund balance of about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which still is a very healthy fund balance for the food service. Any questions on that one?
So we can't, so the food service has its own fund balance.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Then we can't have it three months?
Three months, yes, three months operating expenses.
Okay.
You'll get a, uh,
You get penalized.
Nice letter from T E A telling you, you need to spend some money. So, but you're not penalized or, you know, it didn't cost anything. They just, they just want you to keep it under there. You're not supposed to make money in food service.
Well, it's good to have money in the fund balance and the food service.
Do what?
It's good to have money in.
Oh, absolutely. You're going to have equipment that's going to break down or you're going to need to buy. Absolutely. Yes.
Uh, we're going to check with that. I don't know if we, question list, could we get generators, be involved with fund balance? Or basically keep electrician freezers such as the sun?
It could be, as long as that generator would be directly tied to, say, the freezers and refrigerators of that. It could not have anything else to do with any part of the other school. Yes, you can do that. They're, they're real strict on how you spend your fund balance. It has to be one hundred percent with food service or the cafeteria's eating area. So, yes.
That's what they haven't talked to architects about, that is about looking at, making sure we have one built in for our new high school cafeteria for sure. And we'll look at what that cost is and see if that's something we are looking to do. At least at elementary, uh, if not middle school, proximity of middle school, if we need, not good use of the new high school, doing things that do we need to. But at least elementary and a new high school, making sure that the natural gas grid and generators pop off all of the year. Yeah.
Okay.
The next one is our general operating budget. Um, you can see the first line is what we were at this year. Next line is what we are proposing this, uh, upcoming year. This, this will change some a little bit. We'll find that, we'll mess, we'll, I guess, fine tune the revenue side of, uh, our funding template and everything and look at maybe some other things that will come up. But right now, you can see their impact on fund balance, the second one. That is a positive number. And then at the bottom, you can see that the estimated three months of fund balance, what that needs to be, four point seven. So we are still very well, healthy fund balance on that as well. And then off to the right, you can, I've got made notes on the increases and decreases of, uh, certain functions on our general operating budget. One thing to note, local funds on the revenue at the top, as you can see, last year versus this year, eight hundred thousand dollar decrease. But then you look at the state funds, and it's almost a three point two million dollar increase. That is the state's hold harmless of tax compression that they're going to give us more funds on the state side. Because we will be losing local tax revenue due to the compression.
We're not going to have to bring it back up here for anything else, right?
Uh, I don't think so.
Is there anything else that, that, um, and not quite pertaining to this, but information that he, he might, he might have for us that we want to share?
In regard to talking about bond sales?
Uh, just talking about budget and, and I was thinking about the, uh, the bank. I'm going to crack into the bank. I was thinking about when we need to share that.
About the, or about the difference in the, um, interest earned on our local accounts?
Yes.
You want to share that? But I think we told some individuals you want to share publicly about the increase, uh, in the tax, or in the interest rate.
Interest on that. Previously, the interest rate was one point five one percent. And I went to Alliance and talked to them and negotiated a, a, a new rate of five percent. And the, once you have your depository, you have an extension and you extend it every two years, up three times. Uh, the extension starts on September first for the next two years. And they are giving us about five percent starting on September first on our accounts. It is capped at five percent. Uh, they do that with all their municipalities. Um, so it won't go any higher than that, which is, which is fine. That means if it, I don't see it dropping below five percent for the next two years at all, since it's about five point two seven percent today on the thirteenth week T bill. That's the, that's some extra income that's coming in from that side as well.
Prager, you have to grab another thing. First, second down the jolly.
About how much extra?
About four hundred and sixty thousand. Well, four, no, well, excuse me. It's about three hundred and ninety thousand extra than what we received this year.
That's true.
That's what we need. We've been blessed with so good business managers in the past, so.
You show promise.
Another thing that I guess you could say on this, this year's budget, um, as you know, the property value study came out from the comptroller, and it hit us real hard because, well, it hit us in probably eighty-five percent of every school district in the state of Texas that they said we were undervaluing, uh, values. Well, we weren't. The appraisal districts were, and they took a lot of funding from us. Well, Lynn Barter?
Line Barter.
Line Barter, um, is a, uh, legal firm, and they do our property value study. And they submit their findings to the comptroller. And every school has one that does it and everything. So they had submitted it for last year's, and it came back. They actually got us a reduction of twenty-four point six million dollars on our, uh, property value state, the comptroller said. And how they make their money is if whatever they find with that, they get ten percent. I believe it is a ten percent fee. So the more that they find, the more money they make. Well, they, they estimate this will be another two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars re- that's going to be a refund back to us.
That means this state funding, we should get it in September, is what they're telling us.
Yep.
That will come in.
That's not final, though.
That's, that is, that is not from last year's.
This is twenty twenty-two, yes, this is twenty twenty-two.
They'll, they're in the process of doing the same appeal, uh, for us for this year as well. So hopefully, out of the one point three billion that we lost in state funding because of property value study this year, that is the deficit budget that we're seeing as a part of that, uh, as we finish out this year. We're hoping that they'll be able to do the same thing. And we'll, this time next year, we'll get the same letters taken additional state funding that we will get back or that we'll receive. So, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Prager? All right. I'm being here, we're all, so we need a motion that we, uh, approve the public hearing.
August twenty-eighth? Five fifteen.
Yep. Do I take a motion in a second on that?
No. I already got, I already got way out from there.
Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Kyle. Seconded by Robert. All four. Seven oh. All right. C, consider approval of Jackson Oil Company for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fuel proposal. Okay.
Love you not here because we're still delivering kids home. But, uh, we took bids, had bids from Arthletex Oil of Dangerfield and Jackson Oil of Mount Pleasant. Um, after going through those, the tabulations that were provided for you, um, recommendation is going to be for Jackson Oil Company.
Kyle, we've been with them for several years.
Yes. Yes. They, they were definitely the better, the better bid, for sure.
What they, I'm not looking at it here, but I'm sure it hasn't gone there. You know, it's, don't have you flat, right? It's like so much over what they did.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions about that? I make a motion that we approve Jackson Oil Company for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fuel proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Any further questions? All four. Seven oh, moving on to, uh, the consider approval of agreement for the purchase of attendance credit ending chapter forty-eight funding and delegate contractual authority to the superintendent to obligate Mount Vernon I S D under chapter forty-nine.
We've attached for you the, the information about chapter forty-nine and the steps to go through, as well as the, uh, calculation provided by us from T A, which you will see as of right now on the, on what it shows. Um, it should, I need my to enlarge here. They could, they give us the letter as they've done the last several years stating that we are, uh, chapter forty-nine. But as you'll see, excess revenue of what would be sent back to state is zero, as it's been the last several years. So it's just notified us that we're within, I guess, we're within that range. But it does not show us, there are other schools that it does show what their, uh, excess revenue is. So ours is at zero. But we still have to go through this process and state what we would do. And what we have always done is, um, option three, purchase of average daily attendance credit as provided by some chapter D. And that would be our recommendation tonight as well.
Any questions on that? So we're going to delegate contractual authority to the superintendent to obligate Mount Vernon I S D under chapter forty-nine.
For option three.
For option three.
Yes.
Is that in your option?
Yes, it was, says approval of purchase of attendance credit, which is option three by Lawrence.
All right. Need a motion for that? Motion by Josh, seconded by Linda. Any further questions on that? Okay, all four. That's seven oh. Go to, uh, item E, consider and approve extra particular status requests resolution for four H organizations Franklin County and Titus County.
So we do this each year as well. What this is for is for, uh, our students, um, who are part of the four H programs in both Franklin County and Titus County. I don't know why everybody in Titus County this year, because, uh, when we're acting here last year, her child. Um, but just in case we do, what this does is allow those students, uh, who participate through the four H program on a day that they're missed, uh, would be considered a school sponsor of absence on days that they're out for that. It's a continuation of what we've done the last several years.
Any further questions on that? Okay. Uh, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the extra particular status request for the resolution for four H organizations, primarily Titus County. Do I have a second? Seconded by Leanne. All four. Seven oh. Uh, I don't have, consider and approve the geotech survey service by Alpha Testing LLC.
This is, uh, I can be brought to this by our architect, W R A, presenting this, uh, company to us. Technically, our department should be getting three bids. We do not because of the services they're providing. Uh, but they did recommend board approval. So I'm bringing them to you, bringing, um, uh, Alpha Testing LLC, uh, for your approval for geotech services for upcoming, uh, bond work, uh, to be done on campus. See the price there, uh, total price. I am going to make sure they said we use the, that we also include the utility locate, uh, for them as well for a total price of twenty-three thousand nine hundred.
It's a different company, if geotech testing for.
Correct. Correct. This is W R A. Yes.
With everything else. Okay. Any further questions about that for Alpha Testing to do the geotech test for all the bond projects? Okay. This time, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve Alpha Testing LLC.
Make a motion.
I'll make the motion, yeah, I'll make the motion. We approve them as our geotech survey services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Josh. Any further questions on them? All four. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Uh, Adam. G, considering positive renewal of property and casualty insurance with R N C of Texas.
Um, R N C of Texas is who we have, uh, used, as far as I know, for the amount of time I've been here, uh, property value. As you see, the, um, uh, part of the reason of our, uh, increase, and this is, uh, goes back to what we're talking about, is property value as well. Uh, the armed property has increased in value as well. And so it is a, um, yearly premium, three hundred ninety-four thousand four thirteen, um, which is still the lower bit of what we see from, from others. Tasbi won't, but it's because you have to, Tasbi requires us to get a bid from them to also go with their.
Works company.
Works company, which we have a different kind of use for that.
So what our property value is?
It is a total of, um, what are the, let's see. Seventy-eight million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars in total insured debt.
Is that what would cover, say, if an air conditioner went out? Is it this company or is that?
It's a part of that.
Okay. Okay. Need a motion that we, uh, renew, uh, the property and casualty insurance with R N C of Texas. Do I have a motion for that? Robert makes a motion. Kyle seconded his motion. Any further questions on R N C? All four.
Part of the start, part of the seventeen point, that's what it is, start of the school.
Yes, do some more, maybe. Here's, uh, where we have Robert on H. Consider vendor proposal for custodial supplies for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Oh, read through those if you want me to, but they are listed in your, um, your form book, uh, description of the supplies that are, that have been used, are going to be used, are purchased in the vendor who they've been awarded to. Uh, we have several vendors, Baxter, Complete, Sierra, and Abernathy. Those are the four companies broken up Bobby and Pam, they go through and get those bids and, and, um, so it's not just one vendor, and all go do, find the best bid on each one.
Okay.
It's a lot of work to do that.
Yes. Takes a little time. You're experienced for that, huh? But, I mean, that was something, so, a couple, a couple of years ago, I, if I remember, I think it was one vendor. And, uh, and I go back to Pam Vending, where she was going to kind of brought that up of, you know, there's some savings that we can have if we will take a little time. And so, so we do that.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing it.
Are you okay? Waste a little more time. All right. So do I have a motion that we, uh, because to set these vendors propose for custodial supplies for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year?
Motion made.
Motion made by Linda. I second. Any further questions? Trusting Bobby and Pam and Craig on this deal, so. All four. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Uh, consider approval of, how you spell it?
Sensitix?
Sensitix.
Panic alert buttons and software for staff and campus line alerts.
Uh, shared some information with you, um, tagged to your, in your board information. What this is, is, uh, we've, we've spent time, we're, we're being required, um, now through legislative action in T A, uh, to make sure that we have, uh, small sign, uh, sign panic alert buttons, uh, throughout. We've spent some time this summer looking at different ones. We actually have found one that we were about to go with, weren't completely happy with what they were offering or what they were going to do. Uh, found this one, um, here a few weeks, uh, ago, kind of late summer. And, um, we've set through a couple, um, phone calls and information pieces on this. We like what it is. It's going to, it will be a, uh, card similar to our key card here, the same size, um, that we are, we would get for every staff member, as well as we have extras for subs that are setting up happening as well. Uh, they will come in and show all the, everything with it. What it will do is it, it will show, I'm using example, we're going to do safe training staff. So if Miss Tinson's in her room and has an issue in her room, then she can push the button three times or whatever it is. And her principals, whoever we have designed, have put in the system, her to be, to be notified, will be notified to see that she's in her room. So it's location, it will show her location as well. So let's say now, later in the day, she's outside with students, setting up a playground or whatever. She notices somebody come up in a car or walking up on campus, carrying a gun, whatever. She can, can push another amount of times, uh, and it will notify nine one one, everybody else needs to notify, and also her location, where it is. Um, scrolls are put up as well for notification. Um, just the host system itself, how it was set up, we felt much better with. We like the card system, something I've really been trying to get us to find all summer. Um, and so it's not just, it's not going to be static even for our campus secretaries, because they aren't always at their desk. Uh, but they'll have access to that as well. And, uh, so that is, that is the company we would like to move forward with.
Is this coming out of our safety?
Yes, it is. We, we have, uh, uh, safety grant from the state. So year one, we. Yes, it is, we we have a uh safety grant from the state, so year one, we specify that year one, so year, so the annual rate of twenty-seven thousand and then the one time set or installation, uh that part of uh, let's see, fourteen, seventeen, nineteen, seven, so forty-four, forty-four, or forty-six, seven, forty-six thousand seven hundred, would come out of safety grant year one, and then we would have to budget for the twenty-seven thousand each year, uh but again, they'll come in, they'll train, they'll install everything, they'll they'll, they will send the supplies here and then they'll come, bring a crew, set it all up, train us, and uh then it'll be active.
What, do we have any kind of alerts that we get right now on the app or anything?
Right now we have an app, um in our, and also part of, yes, we have an app on our phone, but this is also trying to take the part away, okay, somebody leaves their phone in the room, trying to get to it, and again, something, if you've got emergency taking place, you get a little nervous, get, you know, stress induced, you might not be able to get your phone into where you need to or whatever, we're trying to make it hopefully as simple as can be, yes ma'am?
Also Senate Bill A58 came out and it negated us using personal mobile devices, so when House Bill three rolled out, when the school safety grant requiring schools to have a silent panic alert system in place, so we had House Bill three rolling through with that requirement, then Senate Bill A58 came behind them and stated, yes, but you cannot require a person to use a personal, personal communication device or a computer, so what they were stating is it has to be district owned, it needs to be something on their person, so I think the thing was, we don't want people using their personal mobile phones, that wasn't the intent, so that's, we had one come out and then one get very specific to us, so recommendation was make sure that you have a wearable or one that they push in a classroom.
Yeah, because we do have some teachers who do approach campuses, you know, such as Carly being here sometimes or over in the auditory, coaches who move around, th- this this system follows them and and gives real time location of where they are, uh if activation is is done, so.
Where does the alert come in once they push it, I mean, who sees it when and?
Well, it'll be, it'll be according to what campus they are, so it could be campus principals, campus administration, uh and according to what award it is as well, Max, Heather, myself, Chandra, others that we set up to get those, again, so on the, such as an active shooter or a lockdown or something like that, uh which is a different emergency, nine-one-one will get it as well.
Will they get to be able to see where the, they will, they can see the location of where it's coming from?
So they'll have to, they'll have to install some things on on their hardware as well to be able to do so, but yes, that's part of it.
But that's included in this?
Yes, yes, and so the mapping feature was another big part of this, I mean, so uh for us it was, and what it does, what it can pro- and provide for us as well, so.
Same, we had to have somebody just lock down every day and just watch, monitor to see where.
No, because again, every, every administrator has a, has a handheld device as well, and so they don't, they'll be able to activate that from there, I mean, once it's notified, they're gonna get it, they'll be able to see location from there, plus, if, for campus administration, according where it is, when they hear, say about hallway, they're gonna be able to see the struggle of where that's coming from, that location as well.
I had to check on one thing, beauty of this company that we did not see in other companies was they are very similar to a security system, they're constantly monitoring our system, so that peace of mind right there, we're not, it's not a campus administrator having to go to report every day, it's not technology having to have something that they're watching, part of the site license is we are in real time, someone on that team is watching Mount Vernon ISD to make sure our hubs are up, that nothing is disconnected, I I know even door access, we're like, oh gosh, is there a door down, and there's six of us trying to watch to see what's going on, so there was peace of mind knowing that someone is literally watching every hub we have, every card, do we have a shelf life on a card, is there one malfunctioning, so part of that whole system was that monitoring piece, above and beyond a teacher, a campus administrator, technology, Jessica, someone that's just kind of looking at it on a spreading basis.
And we don't have to charge them up, right?
Don't have to charge them, don't have to load them in.
They just have a battery battery left on the, the cart.
So I'm guessing that I did have a call on this, if you have this thing around your neck and you go to Dallas, you, they're not gonna know you're in Dallas, right?
That's correct. You have to be, you have to be within, no, you have to be within the hub points within the parameters of our district.
Okay.
I was thinking about two trips or something.
Well, people.
There'll be, there will be a chance that it's within the hub that we set up here in district.
Ezra, you tell your people and say that, Robert, we're not trying to track them, and we can't track them, 'cause, and I don't wanna be tracked either, but if that thing does, it has a little bit of battery, you know, my GPS hits my phone, so it's a little less, but we did have concerns, so that's good to know.
I'm assuming they're not even gonna be tied to a thing, it just.
They're not tied to a thing.
You just push a button and the system identifies where that came from and just puts a dot on it, says this is where it is, so, so y'all, you can trade cards with it, you know, without the government spying on it or something.
Yeah. We're not quite in the point of certain shifts.
I did think about that though, I did think.
We got that on camera. But, you know, we have to explain that, 'cause if we don't explain it, then they're not gonna know, and I would be assuming it too, 'cause I might wanna get Craig in trouble and I might get his card and take it over somewhere and, just getting, getting around that.
What? Hey, and when you fall out in the middle of the pasture and push a button, nobody's gonna.
Well, we either those are set, yeah, yeah. And that was a good saying that, that was kind of what I think y'all told us before was it's kind of like that light alert button, if you're there, you can punch it, that's, somebody's gonna come around it.
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we approve Senetix panic alert buttons and software for staff and campus wide alerts, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Linda, any further questions or discussion, all four, seven oh.
Thank y'all, we'll, we will, we'll look forward with this tomorrow, hopefully we'll have it with staff within the next several weeks.
Chander said she and Melody and Rob was kind of the ones that were starting, it was was uh getting all this stuff together, out of folks, okay, give information items to your department updates.
I'm just asking, we'll just kind of give a update on first day of school and kind of how that went, so, Mr. Ezra, we gotta start?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I've had eleven total first days here at Mount Vernon ISD, and I will say that today was the best one, um all our teachers, parents commented how everything was so smooth, dismissal, we've got a few things we're gonna fix tomorrow for that, but overall everything was, went well, uh not many tears for students or parents. Um I asked several students at lunch, you know, what was their favorite part about their first day, and uh a few said lunch and recess, but I had one first grader in particular say that she uh loved her teacher and was already learning, that was good. And just a little bit, uh date, uh the summer, we had our staff retreat at Deer Lakes Resort, and um we just did a lot of uh team building with our team, we played jellyball and uh paddleboarded, and so I'm I'm I personally thanked, um but just also thank uh Deer Lakes Cabin, if you see them, because of their generous generosity, they um hosted us at no cost, very nice of them. And our back to school PD, uh we have started working on creating a campus vision and we will um finalize that in September, so I'll be sure and share that with you, we did our temperament assessments and it was really neat to see like the different makeups of our grade level teams, and overall, we're looking forward to a great year.
Thank you.
Hey, you know how many kids rode the bus today, any clue?
A lot.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know.
I don't know like how many car, you know, how many people that picked up, 'cause it took about thirty minutes, so that was a lot of kids loaded up in thirty minutes.
I think what Bobby said is, of course, first day, you never have as many ride first days because you have so many parents drop off first day of school, ridership will have numbers will increase as the week goes along, you know, as we get into next week even, uh the first school, when you drop off.
We had a great staff meeting after school and we, we were, we still had a few kids at four forty-five that we're still trying to get in the car line, but it will speed up.
Yeah.
And we get, because we have to.
That's pretty fast though for a lot of kids, yeah.
When they call the name, so it is a process, we we make sure we check each backpack tag, so it'll get better once we learn the kids.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty rapid to make for a bunch of kids.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody, I don't know if I've met everybody, but I'm Sue Williams, I'm standing here right now for Ms. Woodard, just for today, um I wanted to start off with our attendance, so at the end of last year, middle school was ready at about four seventy-five, today we have four hundred and ninety students, and we still have a lot more coming in with paperwork that we did send away today because they just weren't ready, so that's a huge celebration, um I want to give a shout out to Ashley Bates, she made lanyards for each of the fifth grade students coming in, some of these came in, kids came in with the biggest backpacks and a little piece of paper trying to navigate the hallways, and it was super easy just to look and send them off in the right direction, so I just really wanted to acknowledge, like, that's a huge piece of the system, that, you know, the tardy bell was ringing and we didn't have any tears out in the hallway, so that was a, that was another success, and then we held assemblies for all of our grade levels, so fifth through eighth, went over expectations, very clear about what our policies and procedures will be for the year, um they also received that on the parent handbook and they also received that from the teachers, so three times they've heard exactly what the expectations are, so overall, it was a really great day, so, thank you.
All right, good afternoon, so this was a nice, calm, easy day uh here in the high school, um no worries, it's all very organized, no, I joked a little bit, but I got here this morning at six forty-five and um the first, I pulled up and I parked and I saw Ms. Cupid parked there beside me and I looked up and there's already a parent standing outside just waiting on her to get out of her truck, so as soon as she gets out and starts walking the building, she's approached and it's, I gotta register, I gotta do this, I don't, so it started really, really early, so so I'd say, I'd say the unsung heroes of the first couple of days of school is Ms. Cupid and Ms. Bells in the office, um if you, until the season, if you came through, you would see if there's people in there all day long looking to do uh different things and they handle it uh very, very well, so Ms. Cupid, Ms. Bells, uh Ms. Stevens, they're the ones that kind of make it happen the first couple of days of school, so if you see them, shout out to them for that, I'm really excited about our new staff this year, I know we have a, you know, as you know, we have a lot of new teachers and a lot of new coaches, uh but the thing that I would say that stood out the most so far is that just the positivity amongst everybody, so everyone is very excited to be here, very excited to be working at Mount Vernon, I know our coaches are out uh busting their tails already in the hundred and ten degree heat, getting ready for football starting Friday night with the scrimmage and volleyball starting, I believe, tomorrow night, first game there, uh so we're looking forward to a great school year and uh, you know, here we go again. There is, I don't have any for sure numbers yet, I said, I'll tell you, we had a lot of no-shows today, which is not uncommon, um I wanna say we had around four sixty actually in the classrooms today, something, something like that, but talking to Heather this afternoon, she said that that we're, a lot of them, we kind of know where they are, and so it should come up a little bit, um but I don't have a final number yet, so we'll see what that looks like in the next couple of days.
So our overall this year number is down about fifty from where we ended last year, but again, we still have folks who were on vacation and just haven't shown up.
Yeah, there's.
They're not, they're not absent because they've not officially started first day of school this year.
I'd say, I know of a handful that are still on vacation and uh we knew they were gonna be absent, it's not uncommon every year, you have ten or twelve that just don't come the first day and then they show up the second day.
First day of school is basically this, early, first couple of weeks ago, the first day caught it, yeah, again, I tell you, we've got, we have a lot of new faces on each campus, a lot of new faces, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, principal.
Uh and meaning, we had the other day, not everybody was there, but probably what they went over with some of these kids and this misconduct was this vaping deal now, there's no uh, you know, don't do it again kind of a deal, if you get, what was the deal, the state said, Chandra, uh, I have DA.
Yes.
Automatic, that's correct.
Or vaping, instead of don't do it again, if you do, you might get a couple, three more times or something, yeah, like Josh said, you go to jail for your sins, so, I wouldn't be vaping there a period of babe a period of hours, all right, um.
Other informational item is that the uh Mount Vernon News uh has been in circulation for over twelve months, which means it can now be our newspaper record on all our required notices and publications moving forward, that is an information, I will look back to make sure that it's the same thing like a year and a half, two years ago when we had to make it winter because the uh, I don't remember that time, it was off existed, uh now it's been back in business for twelve months and that will be our official uh place that we post notices. Okay, Ms. Lily's gonna help us, isn't that right?
I'm sorry?
She said you're gonna help us with all that, right, on the posting notices and all that?
Oh, we can, oh, we can, I I would like to make a comment, I have seen a lot of first days in the cla- in the classroom over the years, the one at elementary, I didn't go any of the other campuses, was amazingly coordinated and co- it's the best I've ever seen, so, great, great faces to everybody involved with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ezra, you was telling the truth. She just, it definitely takes you a while to. All right, well, at this time, the board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of Texas Department Act five five one oh seven, four. Good, all right, at six oh one, again, all right, seven fifty-five, board convenes back into open session, uh personnel report, knowledge of professional contracts is approved by superintendent.
Yes, for those will be uh Laura Painter, Brian Jacobs, Isaac Warren, Michael Herrera, Bryce Munson, we added Heather Moore, apparently we had inadvertently left her off of the acknowledgements previous, so we want to be sure that we acknowledge her, even though she is already with the district, Heather Moore.
Okay, do we have any resolutions to acknowledge?
We did not disfund.
Okay, any further business? If there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-six.